Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our regularly scheduled work session for Monday, October 2, 2023, here at the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners. Assistant Township Manager Amy Cuthbertson with us tonight. Mr. Berman is on vacation. Ms. Cuthbertson, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondek.
Right.
Commissioner Forstiegrop.
Here.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Present.
Commissioner Wexler.
Present.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Here.
And Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
Chief? First item in our agenda tonight is an update of our ARPA funds. Madam Acting Township Manager, the floor is yours.
Okay, so, thank you. A couple weeks ago, you had asked that I update the board and the community on what we've been doing with ARPA. So myself and Jean Angel from Discover Haverford is going to come up and speak about one of the more prominent programs that we ran, which is the facade improvement program. So we will get started. So to recap, the coronavirus was approved by Congress and President Biden, which delivered $350 million to state and local governments in response to ARPA and how to recover from ARPA. For us individually, we were the proud recipients and thankful and grateful recipients of $19.8 million. We got that over two payments in '21 and '22. That was a formula derived from the Treasury Department. We were also deemed what's called a direct recipient, so monies came directly to us. Many of our co-municipalities in the area were passed through from the state, but our monies came directly to us. That made us a little bit different. There were clear and allowable categories to follow that we'll go through briefly. There were specific noes that we could not spend the money on. The two most common ones, we could not pay down accrued pension liabilities, we could not pay down debt. One of the other obligations was that all the funds had to be obligated by that December 31st '24 number and actually spent by '26. And back in '21, that seemed far off in the distance, but as we know, that is coming up. We had to comply with our reporting requirements. For us, that is a quarterly report. That also depends on your size of government and the amount of monies you received. This is just a glimpse into what we do in-house, how we track things. You'll see across the top are the categories that we're just going to briefly touch on. And each of the programs that this board has approved through either the budget or through a resolution. If it's in green, that means it's still in play, we're still in the midst of it. If it is in red or light red, that means we are finished. So that, again, is just a glimpse as to what we do on a every-month basis. Every month that a new resolution is passed and a new use of funds, and every month that we pay bills. So we update this. And that is just, that's just the top of it, but gives you a flavor. And this is also, for the camera, this is the report that we submit to Treasury each quarter. It's about a 40-page report done online, but that's part of the compliance process as well. Just showing them what we do, describing each of the programs, who it's affecting, things like that. So there were five allowable spending categories. The first one, public health emergence, to respond to the public health emergency. And that could be mental health, physical health. There were, there were different classifications and a broad definition of that. How to respond to negative economic impacts, to individuals, to businesses. Again, the Treasury Department and Congress were very broad. They were very broad but very strict at the same time, if you will. We can provide premium payments to essential workers. We can make investments just in those three areas, water, sewer, broadband, that also translate into like sanitary sewer, storm sewer, things like that. The fifth one was originally called to replace or replenish public sector revenue loss, and it was eventually changed just to a general government classification. We can use that for any purposes, the general government, other than paying down accrued pension liabilities or debt, like was originally a no-no. With the emphasis on all of these were services to disproportionately disadvantaged communities, and by that, they really meant women, children, veterans, racial minorities, and the like. So what has been spent so far? In the public health emergency category, you can see we have spent $844,000 through the end of quarter three. Some of them are, a lot of them, I should say, are park-related. Everybody enjoys our parks. It's, it's a win-win all around. Good for housing values, good for health. It allows us to deal with a pandemic if we should ever have to have one again. We'd be able to be outside recreating, and that's why all improvements to parks are generally acceptable as an acceptable under public health emergencies. We also did some other smaller-scale projects. We replaced an HVAC system with air purification. Again, the air purification is, is a real good part for if we ever had to deal with COVID again in our Public Works building. We've been focusing on senior open houses. We've had two of them. One, most recently, was yesterday. I don't know if anybody is aware of that or heard of anybody, but we had over 200 seniors come to the crack for a fitness and open house event. And that really was geared, anything with seniors, we really have geared to getting them outside again, getting them socializing again, more to the mental health issue of what happened during COVID with everybody being indoors, and seniors were especially hurt by that. The public health emergency again continued. Again, I touched on all the improvements we've made to our great parks, and they're, they're getting even better. We also bought AED devices for first responders, so when they respond to a health emergency, they're better equipped. And there's a photo of the sensory communication board that's at Paddock Park that was new this year. So that was double. It allows children to be outside more in the event of an issue, and it allows those on the sensory, sensory communication challenges to better communicate. For the next category, the negative economic impacts, we've spent over about a half a million dollars. And you can see we had a couple hallmark programs that we really spent a lot of time on, and hopefully, in fact, not hopefully, I know the recipients of these programs were very appreciative of them. So we gave out back-to-business grants to 97 businesses back in the early stages. That was one of our first programs. We sponsored two local job fairs in partnership with Discover Haverford, and we were able to connect businesses that were looking for people with people at that time that were looking for jobs. And if we remember back to the early days, we had a lot of people out of work. So hopefully, there were connections that were made there, and they're still at those jobs. We awarded $50,000 in grants to not-for-profits with programs that were focusing on seniors, again, getting them out, getting them socializing again, recovering from that isolation. We provided $79,000 to Discover Haverford for improved business district beautification, all the plantings. They're now properly watered, taken care of, and they look lovely all year round. So that's what that money went to for a two-year period. We also had a commitment to Discover Haverford to build up the economic development staff, which thus builds up the economic development of the entire community, gets more businesses, gets more programs, gets more customers into the businesses. We did a couple small programs that you'll remember. We did, one of the most popular was the shop small, shop local, the bags, the reusable bags, they flew out like, like hotcakes. We did that. We did new holiday lights. We did the matching gift card program. And we did the welcome to Haverford signs that are along Eagle Road, just to spruce that up a little bit. And one of, as I said earlier, one of all our hallmark programs was the facade improvement program, and we've awarded over $200,000. That's in awards. We still have some still to pay out, although those businesses are finishing up their work. But I'm going to ask Jean to come up from Discover Haverford. As I mentioned, Discover Haverford administered these programs for us, took, took on a lot of the administration paperwork, things like that. So she is going to come up and show you some of the fruits of the work that was done.
Is there a remote?
No.
Just. Does it move this long? Thanks for the opportunity to present tonight, and thanks for all the ways that you've used ARPA funds to help our businesses. I also want to thank you for the privilege of managing that facade grant program. It's been one of the highlights of my work at Discover Haverford. The program also provided a high return on investment for Haverford Township. First, it was a wonderful, it's wonderful to provide tangible support for so many businesses to help with the losses due to the COVID pandemic. Second, it provided needed facade improvements, making our community more interactive. This is the kind of work that enhances the quality of life for residents and raises property values. Third, it supported local contractors who completed the facade work. And fourth, it allowed me to develop and deepen relationships with businesses. These relationships were fostered as I hand-delivered grant materials to businesses who looked like they could use a facelift, worked with businesses as they considered options for projects to tackle, helped them with design ideas, and regularly checked in with them to remind them about upcoming deadlines or check in on their progress. I also want to thank the Grant Committee, Amy Cuthbertson, Kelly Kirk, Don Kelly, who's here, Susanna Baruko, and Jesse Pointon. They were great to work with, and I really appreciate their time and expertise. The matching facade grant program offered a dollar-for-dollar match for over 20 businesses, ranging from $1,000 to $25,000. Fifteen were businesses who owned their own property, two were landlords, and four were businesses who rented commercial space. Recipients were from seven of the nine wards, with the majority centered on a few wards with the high concentration of businesses. Seven in Ward Seven, four in Words Three and Four, three in Ward Two, and one in Wards Five and Eight. Some of the, some of the grants were small, important for each business, but were really, you know, signage or awnings that allowed people to rebrand. Two more awnings. This one was a big improvement. So this is, this is the before photo, and this is the after. They did a new awning, and they also power washed the building. Again, these awnings needed a replacement, and this is what it looks like now. Some projects included masonry repair and repointing. A few included energy-efficient replacement windows. Here's landscaping and hardscaping project. There's new fences. This is along Haverford Road where Next Doc Coffee is, although the landlord was the one who did the new fence. This is Sustain Realty. This is next to the Brookline Fire Company. Quite an improvement there. Fewer stucco repair and painting. This one's really striking. Cheney's project included a new awning and planters for their outdoor seating area and new signage. There's a picture of Gans plumbing before. As you can see, there's, you know. So the Gans work included power washing and stucco repair, painting, new windows, new fences, the enclosure there for the AC unit, hardscaping and landscaping, new awnings over the side doors have been ordered, so those two doors there. Ivy Inn on Brookline, that's one of my favorite projects since it shows such a huge improvement. They did a complete facade renovation, including new windows and doors, masonry repair, new awnings, new signage, power washing and painting. And these murals on the side showing the historic Brookline are stunning. Oddly, the bakery house looked fairly good before renovation, but as you can see, it was a bit old-fashioned, and the brick facade at ground level was disintegrating. Also noticed that the arched windows on the whole block had been removed and replaced with various sizes and styles of windows. Here you can see the completed project, which include, included masonry repair, painting which accents the historic features of the building, new bay windows on the first floor and arched windows at the top, window boxes and new lighting. I asked, I gave, I gave all the recipients a chance to write notes of appreciation to the committee and to you guys, and so I've given you all of those, everything I've gotten. But Jessica Hawthorne of Main Line Therapeutic Wellness expressed it well when she said, "Programs like this create a ripple effect and encourage momentum and engagement." I feel like we couldn't ask for more than that. Thanks again for giving us the time to present tonight. We hope you're proud of what we've accomplished together. Thanks to the committee, Kelly and Don. And does anyone have any questions or comments? Thanks.
Just our thanks for your efforts on this. Thank you.
My pleasure. And we just have a couple more categories to explain what we did here. So premium pay was one of the original categories I brought up, and you'll see we have our fire, our paramedics, our police, and our sanitation and public works employees. We gave them, in all intents and purposes, a small stipend. If you remember back to, they were very dark days. We didn't know how things were being transmitted or anything like that, and these men and women came to work every day. So that was the premium pay category. The big, the big winner of all the categories is infrastructure, which infrastructure isn't always as fun. It certainly isn't as pretty as, as park improvements and those things, but these are the things that when they go south, it really impacts people's lives. So the biggest investment right now is in some storm and sanitary sewer projects that had to be done. Those with an asterisk are still in the midst of being completed, but you can see there were three, three major storm sewer projects and two sanitary sewer projects. And they're expensive to do, they're, like I said, they're not fun, but they're really, really important to everybody's daily, daily quality of life. And then we have the general government category. As you can see, we haven't spent a lot out of this category. This is the most flexible to us, so we have a lot of flexibility here. Pretty much anything that goes with the, the running of a government can be put in this category. But I wanted to share a picture. This is something that our community may see out on the roads once leaf season starts. And this is, this was one of our township manager, he brought this in, this was his idea, so I think it's going to be great. That is an extreme leaf vacuum, so that's going to be able to vacuum up a lot more leaves than we have been in the past with our manual, largely manual systems. So we're excited about this for when leaf season starts, and like I said, the community will see that. The Tracer software project, this is also something that the community has gotten a taste of right now, anybody who's used the Citizen Reporter system, which is a way to communicate with township staff, township management about things that the community sees on a daily basis. Do you see a street light out? Do you see a pothole? Things like that can be reported through the Tracer system, the community reporter module of it. The entire Tracer system is still in the implementation. We're looking to go, I believe, fully live in November, but that will encompass all of our code enforcement, a lot of aspects of Public Works, and zoning also will be taking part in Tracer. So we hope that's going to increase our efficiency and the way we get things done on the government level. So what's obligated so far? So that was just what was spent. So obligated, so these are things that go into our totals. We are good to, to, to do these projects as long as they're paid for by the end of '26. Okay? So they're all either under contract with a purchase order or a formal contract, I should say. So we have some EMS equipment still out waiting for delivery. We have some more playground equipment, LED park replacement, a lot of work in the parks as, as Brian, you know, brings you up to date on very often because we explain what we're using the money for at that time. Improvements to the basketball courts at Grange and Preston, and as I alluded to on the previous slide, the remaining portion of the Tracer project. And then we have what is committed. So these are things that the board has formally, officially, and publicly said they're going to fund, but we're just not there yet with, with being under contract or anything like that. One of the biggest ones is the library project. So we will be using $3 million of ARPA funds to, to help with that library project. That was publicly voted on with a resolution. We have the WMBE grant program, $101,000 was allocated to that. And as part of next week's agenda, the board that reviewed all of those applications will make recommendations to the board for award. We received 22 applications. It was a very difficult process, but we have a list of 10 for recommendation to you next Tuesday when we meet. We also are in the midst of the Senior Widowed and Disabled Persons Economic Recovery Payment Program, and we allocated $265,000 to that. If you remember, this is for anyone who qualified for the state property tax rent rebate program. So if you qualified under the state's, you know, guidelines to be impoverished enough to receive their payment, then you received our payment. So that is on a rolling basis. We've probably processed maybe 50, 55,000 so far, but we process them as our community members get their rebates from the state, then they can apply for ours. So they, they just are processed on a rolling basis at the state level. So they'll continue through the end of the year. So to date, we have spent a total of 3.5 million. We have another one and a half obligated and under contract, another 4.5 committed, which leaves 10.3 left to go, which will equate to pretty exciting next couple of years, especially the '24 budget process, because we have to have everything under contract or under PO by the end of '24. So '24 is going to be very busy, very exciting, I think. These are some things, because I certainly don't want to take any of the sales out of the budget talks, but these are things that have been discussed on the staff level at least. The Brookline Park development, the emergency apparatus needs, extending the trails. This job development apprenticeship program is something I'm particularly proud of. That is one area that there's just not a lot of up-and-coming building inspectors, just municipality-wide, all over the place. So we're going to have an apprenticeship program where we will educate someone, and then they'll commit to stay with us for a few years in our building inspections department. We have another grant program coming up, Business Revitalization and Modernization Program, that we hope to roll out in the first quarter of '24, again, helping our local businesses. We have continued investment in electric vehicles and the related infrastructure, because we can't have the vehicles without the infrastructure. So we're going to see a push on getting that infrastructure in places where it needs to be. The, again, investment in playground equipment continues, and it will continue. All of our parks are continuing, need facelifts, and they're getting that, and we will get there to where we're proud of each and every one of them. Fencing, paving, and lighting at those parks, field lighting, park pavilions, equipment for our volunteer firefighters. You'll see more storm and sanitary projects requested for approval. Stream bank restoration, we have MS4, which is a program that's from the state with requirements to cut down on invasives. You'll see a lot of efforts towards that. Our Public Works Department had a lot of heavy equipment needs that we're going to get taken care of through ARPA funds, so that's going to be good. And these are equipment needs that are like the one every 10-year type of equipments. They're big, big-ticket items, not our normal equipment, not our pickup trucks and things like that. So we're going to get them taken care of through ARPA, and our police department has some new body cameras and car cameras also under request. So again, the wrap-up is that look forward to 2024 and the years ahead, the budget process and the projects that are going to be talked about, not during this budget season especially, but that will set up the lineup for what's going to happen in the next couple of years. So if you have any questions for me or Jean or otherwise, the program's running along. We're in compliance with all of our reporting requirements. The board, you get a summary of what's spent each month, I'm sorry, each quarter when I give you a financial report. So if there's anything else we can answer, we'd be happy to.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Could you talk a little bit more about the job development apprenticeship program for building inspectors? Because that seems quite innovative and something that we really do need.
with us a certain number of years.
Are you talking about one apprentice or?
We are starting with one. We want to get through one, and if we can get another one underway before the end of '24, I think we're open to that. But yes, I'm very excited about that program.
Thank you.
Before we go to the next item, I failed to announce that we, as a board, met in executive session prior to this meeting to discuss issues involving personnel. Next on our agenda is Commissioner Committee updates. Do any Commissioner Committees have any information for us? Mr. Wexler?
I met with Public Works last week. Leaf collection, one of our favorite topics. They're going to move back, due to the complaints from the last previous years, leaf collection's going to be moved back a week, week and a half, start a little bit later. They're reallocating the task force into two large groups to attack each ward at a time, so they'll go from one ward to the next instead of going one week in there, and they'll, and they'll do that. They're going to attack with the new truck and a couple of collection boxes, so that they've reallocated the manpower, going to use less temporary help from PERS, you know, the temporary group, and less people drawing out of, by allocating Public Works staff, less people from the general staff will have to be involved because they'll have concentrated groups, and they'll go through the specific wards each time. But they are going to start later to address those complaints. We did talk about having the sixth ward bag their own leaves that would relieve.
Of course. Yeah. I mean, there's a, I have a survey monkey on when people need me to come and rake their leaves in their yard.
I said we'd probably do that next year, but not this year. So anyway, you're off the hook. But so they're going to try a little bit different. They're innovative. The Public Works staff put the program together. They think it's going to be a lot more efficient, and we will see. But hopefully, and again, if weather could cancel a whole season, you never know. In early snow and everything gets rearranged for snow removal and plowing, then leaves are back on us. But let's pray for good weather, and the leaves come down quickly this year, so.
I bag all my leaves, and then I just bring the bags out front and dump them out onto the sidewalk the night before they collect them. Thank you. Commissioner Wexler, any other commissioners with updates?
I have a quick question. Bill, I don't know if you're able to answer the question of when they're going to announce the leaf schedule?
Should be going up pretty soon. It's going to be a week after, it starts in November, well, last week here. I think it's already, is it already on the website? I thought I saw a copy of it.
It is not on the website yet. We anticipate, Mr. Mariani is on vacation. He returns next week, and by the end of next week, I think it should be finalized and up and out for the public to see.
We are starting at least one week later this year.
Thank you. Commissioner Wexler, any other commissioners with committee updates?
Just to report, the Finance Committee met earlier this evening, prior to the executive session earlier in the day, just to discuss ongoing budget discussions.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Trombetta.
Thank you. Mr. President, we, the Economic Development Committee met on September 18th, the purpose of which was to talk about use of ARPA funds, coincidentally.
Excellent. Thank you. Moving on, Chief, would you come up and give us the police department's update?
Thank you, Commissioners. Before I start my regular report, I want to report on the involvement of the police and last week, the ruling in Philadelphia, which caused a peaceful protest for the city. The opportunists took that peaceful protest and then started looting in parts of the city. Upper Darby had serious concerns about 69th Street, contacted Superintendent Bernhardt on Tuesday night while this was going on, and we sent seven officers down to help and maintain peace in that area. The following night, we had, the following day, we had conference calls with Philadelphia Police Department. They were very concerned about West Philadelphia and their allotment of manpower. They asked us, they understand that we had our concerns in Delaware County, they asked us if we could maintain a presence somewhere close to the border, such as Upper Darby. With that, I conference with the other chiefs of police, and we put together a manpower poll with thirty-five officers who had ended up at Upper Darby. We're due to deploy at eight o'clock, and we got a call from Superintendent Bernhardt that they were monitoring social media. Social media told them that Sixty-Ninth Street ward was at eight-thirty, quarter to nine. They were, the crowd was going to head for Upper Darby and Sixty-Ninth Street and see what they could do. So with that, with the deployment, and Upper Darby was putting roadblocks up or barricades to keep the area safe, at nine o'clock, myself and Deputy Chief Hagan were down in the area, and the L let off, and so be it. Tons and tons of use came out onto Sixty-Ninth Street. But with the police presence there, with the help of the entire county, we were able to control that area, which was very important. So Thursday and Friday night, we also did the same thing. Thursday night, we had the same issues, another conference call with Philadelphia. We maintained the same issues in Sixty-Ninth Street and along the border, along Sixty-third and Market Street. And then on Friday night, we didn't expect to have to do anything. Things had quieted down by then. Superintendent Bernhardt called me early, late in the evening, and social media once again said Barclay Square. So I contacted the remaining chiefs, other chiefs in the county, and we put another manpower poll together, sent thirty people down there to help them maintain peace. So what I'm saying here is that, you know, Delaware County works as a team. A lot of times when we're called into Philadelphia, they reimburse us for the overtime. They also said that they reimbursed for the overtime, even though we were not in the city, but we were maintaining a presence for them if that area got out of control. Luckily, it didn't. Myself and Deputy Chief Hagan took a ride down there late in the week, and it was relatively quiet after the first night of mayhem. So, you know, I can't stress enough that people, you know, peaceful protest, people take that opportunity, have nothing to do with the incident, just to steal and loot businesses. So it's, it's very important that we maintain these relationships, because God forbid it happens here, I can make that phone call. But during this, we were concerned about our, I'll call them box stores, one town should apply Lowe's, I keep on saying Clover, but you know Kohl's. I date myself.
Showing your age.
And Giant Nose Store, we're very concerned about those, so we had a police presence down there also. We had no issues at all, but our police presence was heavy, and if anything popped up. We learned, obviously, from, we always learn from our past issues, so we were prepared throughout the whole county.
Chief, I know we did speak about this, and I personally thank you, but I wanted to publicly thank you and all your officers for stepping up and proactively preventing, you know, what could have been a second or a third violent night. So again, thanks from all of us in the township and all of our neighboring townships. It's obvious to me that you folks are communicating well with our neighboring townships as well as the city, and also monitoring social media well to see in advance how often you can predict some of these, where and when these, these things may arise. So it's one thing for us to talk about blowing manpower, it's another to think about this is somebody on their night off who gets a call and says, go put yourself in harm's way. We don't know what's coming, and there's a few of you that are going to do your best to stop it. I wanted to let you know personally how much I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it. And this, this, these, I call them task force, we have, we have a southeastern region task force with all five counties, and it evolved from nine-eleven and funding, where a lot of our equipment was bought from federal funding, and this still evolves where we continue these contacts and have a working relationship with all police departments within Delaware County and outside the city. So it's very important that, you know, we can have these discussions and talk, and when they need something, we can be there for any of us. So now, my report, monthly report for September, we had thirty-eight criminal arrests, two juvenile arrests, one-hundred-and-seventy-two traffic citations, thirty non-traffic citations, one-hundred-and-ninety-nine written warnings, four-hundred-and-seventeen parking tickets. We had a robbery at the Giant Store, one-sixteen Township Line, two females stole racks of lamb and other products. Now, we call the robberies, they're going into the store. It's bigger than shoplifting, or taking large amounts, so they're classified as robberies because of the amount.
Not burglaries. I mean, these are not, we're not talking about threats or physical, there's no physical altercation.
The stores are open, but they were confronted by store security, which they have now, then their struggle ensued, an employee was kicked, and had him thrown, had him thrown to him by the actors. The two females were later stopped in their Uber, identified and arrested. You have to chuckle at that, they're taking it to go commit crimes. Swiss Farms, I don't make this stuff up, you know that. Swiss Farms, they had another incident down there, a black Honda Accord, happened, this happened at ten o'clock, ten-thirty in the morning. Two males came out with ski masks, and the truck was unloading merchandise. They grabbed a thousand, ten-thousand dollars worth of cigarettes and fled. Investigation is ongoing. They had three similar robberies in other jurisdictions. What we, talking to the warehouse managers, that they had fired two or three individuals, and they had sour grapes, and they know their routes, and this is where this is coming from, so we expect to have some arrests on that. Motor vehicle thefts, we had attempts, we had four, four-hundred-block of Darby. Someone tried to steal a two-thousand-and-eight Honda Accord, Hyundai, I'm sorry, Santa Fe. Passenger window was smashed down, and the steering wheel column was ripped off. We all know that you read in the paper, the, those makes of vehicles are problematic because they're easy to steal with a iPhone cord. Three-hundred-block of Exeter, resident observed her Porsche being stolen from her driver and called the police. Another vehicle, Mercedes-Benz was also taken, but found on the street nearby. The Mercedes suffered a flat tire during the theft and was abandoned. The Porsche was later pursued by Radnor, both unsuccessful. Key fobs were left in both vehicles. Eleven-hundred-block of Bon Air, two-thousand-and-eight Hyundai was stolen from outside their home. Light-colored vehicle stopped in the roadway. This is coming from a video from the house, and the car drove away. The vehicle was recovered in the city of Philadelphia after it was involved in a crash. Twenty-one-hundred-block of Haberford Road, victim states for two-thousand and four Tars was missing from the street, had a flat tire. We're thinking that it was taken, either repossessed, so, or another issue. Seven thefts from autos, and attempts on our golf club. Fifteen-hundred-block of Briarwood, you know, block of Cooper Town, one-hundred-block of Golf Hills, west of Manoa, another one at Leonard Golf Club, smashing grabs. Persons were left in the cars, and then five-hundred-block of Fairmount, a license plate was stolen. And K-9 usage, four-hundred-block of the East Township Line for a burglar alarm. Another Providence Police requested a K-9 assist to track for a missing juvenile. The child was found nearby by another party, and assist Radnor, Winnie, performed an open-air sniff in the vehicle stop. Mailbox thefts, we only had three, post office, two in the post office, and a private mailbox in Park Ridge. So last but not least, we have a new scam going on. Actors tell the victim, they have, they deposit money in their account by mistake. If they don't get the money back, the boss will fire them. Actors gain access to the bank account online from the person, and when the victim feels sorry for them, money is then removed from the account. So what we're saying is never trust anybody over the phone, no matter how sincere they seem. So this is the newest scam that's out there. Sadly, it targets our senior citizens, and you have seen some large, large amounts of money come out of their accounts.
I'm aware of the scam, Chief, and yeah, it is a particularly nefarious one.
Yes. And I'll say again, Haberford Alerts, if we'd like to have more people sign up for it, you can go to www.haberfordalerts.com. This can tell us that you have a camera in your home. We do not access it. We ask you, if we consider if there's a crime in your neighborhood, you also can be notified if there's any emergencies in your, your neighborhood, or if there's a crime going on, or a weather alert, anything like that. So we're pushing that, and Commissioners, if you'll, once again, put it out in your push on your newsletters and your notifications, that would help us a great deal.
Chief, with Township Day coming up this Saturday, does the, I forget, I ought to know this, does the P.D. have a display or have any kind of table at?
We're all, we're all out there, Commissioners.
Well, I know, but you're not all going to hold, you know, those cards and, you know, give away cones or anything like that.
As a police department, I'm told the weather's going to get very chilly, but we also will be giving out snow cones for free for anybody that steps up to, to our table. So yes, we will be out there.
All right, so all those, all that information will be there for folks as well.
And last but not least, I'd like to thank publicly Steve Vidian from Vidian Dodge Chrysler Jeep, and the Kelsey family for donating money to buy our new K-9 Winnie. I'm sure everybody has saw our pictures on social media in the paper. They were very, very nice, and they couldn't be more thankful to us and to the township for allowing them to do that. So we're very impressed, and we're very happy with that. So we have been best, we have been best friends.
And I believe you got a shout-out on their podcast, too.
We certainly did, yes. We certainly did. And because of that, we had a, someone else call. We have another K-9 retiring at the end of this year. An organization called, they want to donate money to purchase a new K-9, the full amount. So we're very happy with that. So that little bit of publicity generated and allowed us to keep moving forward with our programs.
Wonderful to hear, Chief.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, we'll, we'll move now to next week's excitement. One announcement that I'd like to make, the Board of Commissioners, we will be holding a special meeting on Monday, October thirtieth, at seven P.M. here in our Commissioner Meeting Room, to consider awarding contracts to the library renovation and expansion project. And at that meeting, we will also be considering the second reading of an ordinance that we hope to pass next week, authorizing the acquisition of One Mill Road. Also at that meeting, we will be inviting District Attorney Jack Stolzstimer to return here to our board to give us a state-of-the-county address, let us know what's new. It will be a reminder to all of us what a terrific advantage it is to us and Havreford Township to have Havreford Township President serving as our district attorney. So we look forward to seeing him and look forward to seeing all of you. Also, on next week's agenda will be ordinance number P-ten of two-thousand-and-twenty-three. This will be a traffic ordinance, a second reading. We will also consider ordinance P-eleven of two-thousand-and-twenty-three. That will be the acquisition of One Mill Road. And that is here in our agenda. We will be discussing, but not considering for action yet, two ordinances. First ordinance is to consider amending Chapter one-sixty of the Land Development Subdivision and Chapter one-fifty-seven of Streets and Sidewalks of our Township Code. That is to consider the requirement, as opposed to just a township preference, or sidewalks to be installed in any subdivisions or future land development in unimproved lots here in Havreford Township. I said unimproved lots, I'm not sure if that's a distinction in the, in the ordinance, but it's something that we will be discussing, not acting on next week, but for our consideration. As well as an amendment to our zoning code, which will add a section involving limited municipal exemptions to certain zoning restrictions, which also something we will be considering, but not acting on next week. For our consideration will also be several resolutions. Resolution for plan revision for new land development at four-thousand-and-eight Darby Road, resolution of lot line change, one-oh-four and one-oh-eight All Gates Drive. We will consider the purchase, the use of ARPA funds in four separate resolutions, a resolution for Haberford Reserve Replacement Fence, Haberford Reserve Ball Field Lights, paddock park parking, paddock park paving, trying to say that three times that. And also Grange Pickleball Court Soundproof Curtains. And then finally, a resolution we'll be considering for the Delco Greenways Grant Program Application for Brookline Park. Also, we will be considering adopting women and minority business enterprises, that's the WMBE Economic Development Grant Program. Recommendations will be presented to us from our township staff for us to award. Did you say there'll be ten awards for us to consider? There'll be ten awards for us to consider next week. We look forward to that immensely. Also, we will be awarding contracts, we will be awarding a contract for the traffic signal maintenance contract, and we will also be considering, and hopefully doing this at the recommendation of our township manager, we will be rejecting all bids for the facade replacement project here at ten-fourteen Darby Road, as we are unsatisfied with the, with the details of all the bids, and we will be putting it back out for consideration. Also, at next week's meeting, we will be doing several purchases. Our departments will be, our Parks and Rec Department will be purchasing Haberford Reserve Replacement Fence, that's part of the ARPA project I mentioned earlier, Haberford Reserve Ball Field Lights, also as part of the ARPA resolution, paddock park paving, I said right this time, which is also ARPA. And finally, the purchases associated with the pickleball courts downproof curtains. Also for our, next week, we'll be proclaiming the Brookline Baseball Champions, and we will be also doing a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. I blew through these things on the agenda, not with the intention of stopping any conversations about them, but just to let everybody know what's out there. Do any of my colleagues have anything they would like to talk about, any of the ordinances, resolutions, contract awards, or purchases that we will be conducting next week? There are two things I would like to also mention. As I said, next Saturday, this Saturday will be October seventh, will be Haberford Township Day. It looks like the weather is going to behave, and we're all looking forward to a return of Haberford Township Day and seeing everybody on the parade route, and then here at the Township Building and all up and down Darby Road and Brookline Boulevard that morning. Parade starts at ten-thirty from the Manoa Shopping Center, and it is always, always a wonderful day. I also want to let folks know that our government has reinstated the free COVID test program, so if everybody will give me a moment, I will get information on that. Yeah, he sent it to me. Sorry, I just have to look at a text, sorry, ladies and gentlemen. So the free COVID tests are back. This is done through, I believe, the United States Post Office. You will go on their website, enter in your, your address, and you will be able to get four free test kits per household from covidtests.gov. And I encourage everybody to do that. We are, I'd like to think we're through the worst of this, but there's certainly another uptick in COVIDs and different variants. There is also current vaccines out, but I think we're still working on, well, I believe that you can get the vaccines for free if you schedule it at certain, at certain pharmacies. We're not yet in a position as a township to have, to be able to do COVID vaccination programs like we've done in the past, but we will keep you posted if that changes. We don't normally take questions, but sir, go ahead. So, sir, thank you for that, raising that. So next week, that is on our agenda for next week, and next week, prior to any action that we as a board take, the public can speak in our, in our public forum. You could call during the week and be put on the list as one of the registered speakers, or because it is an agenda item, you could simply raise your hand and then speak at the time that we invite public comment at the start of next week's meeting. So next week, of course, is, our meeting is Tuesday, the tenth, not Monday, the ninth. So Tuesday, the tenth, at seven P.M. And anytime prior to that, if you want to call the township, you can guarantee your spot as one of the registered speakers. But anybody with something to say on an item on the agenda is able to come forward and speak then. And certainly, thank you, Commissioner Trumpetta, nothing prevents you from reaching out to the, to our Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Brian Barrett, and speak with him about any of your concerns as well. Okay. So thank you for that. Unless anybody else on the board has anything else, I would just remind our folks, we are going to gather again in executive session. going to gather again in executive session after this meeting. We will report on that before the start of our next regularly scheduled meeting next Tuesday at 7:00 PM here in Havreford, here in the meeting room. Is any of my other, any of my colleagues have anything else they would like to add?
Can I ask, am I allowed to ask a question about the ordinance regarding land development and subdivision and streets and sidewalks?
You are, you are allowed to ask any question you'd like. You mean specifically the Chapter 160, the Land Development Subdivision?
Yeah, I'm looking at Section Roman Number One, Code Amendments, Letter A, Chapter 160.
Yes.
And it's, the subdivision and land development is hereby amended to provide as follows. Sidewalks shall be provided for all existing and proposed streets. Along all existing or proposed street on which a subdivision or land development abuts, sidewalks shall be constructed to accommodate the sidewalk curbing and the verge requirements of subsection E, which you can find if you go into the E code. So just for clarification purposes, does that mean that any street that is in the township with houses constructed along it that does not have a sidewalk, if we pass this, will be required to put in a sidewalk?
No, it doesn't. This is just in response to multiple times when subdivision projects have come to us and there's been a question about whether we should put a sidewalk in. This applies to new, if there, a subdivision is proposed, the default position of the board is that we should put sidewalks in at the subdivision. We can still decide, we're not going to, we can decide we would not want to do that, but our default position is they should be in. So it isn't, it's only for subdivision, it's only for land development, not streets that don't have sidewalks now.
Okay, I wanted that clarification. Okay, good.
And this is, this is not something, we aren't, we aren't taking up this ordinance next week. This is the first time we are seeing it. It's been several months since we, we've talked about this issue and we were going to put an ordinance in front of us. And then I expect all of our questions and issues to be raised, whether we need to raise them among each other or also with our solicitor. Yours is an excellent point about whether or not it just requires sidewalks at the outset as Commissioner Hart indicated. This addresses the whole in our, you know, currently in our ordinances that makes, when the planning commission is considering subdivisions, there's been inconsistency as to when sidewalks are required and when sidewalks aren't required. And an amendment to our ordinance will kind of state unequivocally what is ultimately our board's decision and policy on what should be on sidewalks. So this is, this is an ordinance that is in the works and obviously everybody's comments and questions and concerns hopefully be addressed before we take it up. Same with the ordinance, the other ordinance that we're just considering next week for the first time, but not, not voting on. And that is the limited municipal exemption from, from our zoning ordinances. It's something that other townships do, obviously so is the sidewalk thing. And I want us all to have a great deal of information before we, before we pass an ordinance like that. Any other, but obviously, anything on our agenda tonight or next week is something anybody can ask about tonight if they'd like. I just went through them quickly, but not with the goal of ruling out any comments or questions or clarifications if necessary. So hearing none, if none of my colleagues have anything else to offer, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn? Second.
We are adjourned. All right, let's all meet in the back. Thanks, folks. Good night. Thank you all for being here.